It was way back in November. For me to very briefly just give the board a recollection as to what occurred and what this is all about, and then I would ask John Cavanaro and John Teriaki briefly to walk you guys through the supplemental plans that were filed with the board since the last meeting. Does that sound good?
That's great.
Okay, great. So, this is, these properties are actually two properties with two separate addresses, one at 449 Jerusalem and one at 457 Jerusalem, both owned by my clients, John Starvis and Shelley VanderWaal. Their primary dwelling, each property has a dwelling on them. The primary dwelling is the larger dwelling, and that's located at 449 Jerusalem. They also have a smaller dwelling, which is a one-bedroom dwelling located at 457 Jerusalem. They bought each property at different times. The house at 457 Jerusalem was built in about 1950s or thereabout, prior to the adoption of zoning in Cohasset. We've requested a special permit under Section 8.7 to raise the house at 457 Jerusalem, the smaller one, which is essentially right on Jerusalem Road almost, and to reconstruct it, in the process eliminating the side yard setback, nonconformity altogether, and moving the building further from Jerusalem Road. So, kind of a net improvement all the way around. We also have a retaining wall in the front along the street, which is higher than three feet, and it makes full sense to extend that retaining wall all the way through to the side yard. Additionally, a portion of the property, not the portion where there's a building, but a portion of the property is located in the floodplain overlay. And so, we had to request a special permit under Section 9.7G for a couple of pipes that are under the ground in that area. We might need to do some work to extend them. And then, under Section 9.7H, in order to do that work in the floodplain, as well as to reinforce the coastal bank to prevent some erosion with some stone riprap. And John could talk to you about the slope reinforcement if you'd like. So, essentially, we were here in November, but the board requested some additional information, such as height of the proposed structure, as well as some facade calculations. And we also had a pending application before the Conservation Commission. And as the board, I'm sure, is aware, it's not easy to get variances from the Conservation Commission these days. So, we left the hearing open in case there would be any changes to the plans, et cetera. John can talk about the changes that were made. There was a bit of a scale-back of what the proposal was to reinforce the slope. And we received a variance in January. And then, John Teriaki was brought on board, and the building was slightly tweaked. And since it was tweaked, both in footprint and in facade, et cetera, the changes actually further benefit the town insofar as the building was moved a couple more feet further from the side yard and a couple more feet further from the front yard. And so, we think it's a net improvement all the way around. The proposed structure essentially would not be any higher than the existing structure. And notably, we're proposing to eliminate the bedroom in the existing dwelling, and the proposed reconstructed dwelling would be a three-car garage with some storage space on the remainder of the building. And so, the proposal is essentially to eliminate two lots and merge it into one with those improvements. And I'm happy to turn it over to John or enter any questions that he might have.
Does the board have any questions for Jeff at this time?
Yeah.
I do not. John, are you up?
John, we can't hear you. You need to unmute.
We don't have a mute button on for John. I don't see one.
When I logged in, my mute button was automatically...
It's Lauren Lind. I'll unmute him.
Oh.
And the scheduling software.
Try it now, John.
I can do it. I just don't have them all in the same place.
John, you can call me on my cellphone, and I can relay it to the board.
For some reason, he doesn't have audio at all. I don't know whether it was how...
Is this a different technology than the normal Zoom technology?
It is. It's the webinar, but everybody, when you log in...
Yeah, you should have a choice on both video and...
Right, when you come in. If I, Lauren, if I make him a co-host? Try that.
And I can try to put him on speakerphone and...
Yeah, if we have to.
There you are.
John, are you hearing us? Nod your head? Yes, okay.
John, I'm going to give you a call. There he goes, getting his phone.
I'm actually dialed in with the phone as well.
Okay, so, I don't know...
I might have done it.
Say a few things, John, so we can hear again.
Can you hear me?
Speak up.
Hello?
Is that better? Can you guys hear that?
Let me leave the meeting and come back in.
Okay. So, what John's going to try and do is leave the meeting and come back in.
It's sort of a rule that that happens at least once during these meetings.
Well, I've had a lot of Zoom meetings, and that's a first for me. But not Zoom webinar.
I like your background.
Oh, thank you.
So, you're still muted, John?
Oh, hello.
There you go.
Oh, good.
Welcome. Good evening. Sorry about that. So, as Jeff mentioned, we had a revisit to the Conservation Commission after our initial hearing with the Zoning Board of Appeals. When we first presented to you, we had a more robust campaign of erosion protection and essentially fill within the floodplain from the water side. And when we presented this to the commission, they asked us to revisit the proposal to minimize the amount of work in the floodplain and to not have as much extension beyond the existing retaining walls that were out there on the site. Essentially, what would happen along the coastline of this property is that there are a lot of old retaining walls that have failed over the years, and that prompted us to design a rearmament of that bank. So, what we did was we reduced the footprint of the amount of work in the floodplain by about 75% in footprint. And so, we went from about 4,500 square feet of footprint in the floodplain down to about 1,000 square feet. And what we're planning to do is to armor really just the principal area of erosion between two existing retaining walls right on the water side. We eliminated any filling above the top of those existing retaining walls, and we added a vegetated buffer at the top of the bank. So, the work down at the water sheet has been reduced dramatically, and that is essentially all of the work within the floodplain for this application. Moving landward, the pool was also part of that conservation application, so that was included with that notice of intent. And then, as we get closer to the proposed building that Jeff talked about, that is mostly outside of the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. But what changed there, as Jeff articulated, was the building, the footprint stayed relatively the same, but it was shifted away from the side yard setback and also further inboard to the property away from the front yard setback. So, we're starting with two nonconformities of that existing building with about a three-foot side yard setback and about a two-foot front yard setback. So, we're increasing the side yard setback to beyond conforming from, we had it at 35 feet, we've pushed that to almost 40 feet. So, that's well inside the side yard setback. The front yard setback went from about six feet, little over six feet, and we pushed that back another three and a half feet to about 10 feet, about 9.7 feet. So, by shifting the building away from the side yard and further away from the front yard, we ended up reducing the footprint of nonconforming structure within that front yard setback from about 525 square feet to about 480 square feet. So, we knocked that down about 10%. So, those are really the biggest changes in the application. It's essentially a reduction on both fronts. In the floodplain, the work went down dramatically through our collaboration with the Conservation Commission, and also, the building itself became more conforming by getting it further away from the front yard, as well as the side yard. So, with that, those are the principal changes on the site plan. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. Does anybody have any questions for John at this time? Third hitter?
Hi, this is John Teriaki. I hope you can hear me.
I'm clear.
Great. I will attempt to, oh, I was going to share my screen, but it looks like I'm not able to do that. So, I will go through the drawings real quick, which I'm sure you have a packet in front of you, just illustrating the footprint area in the setback. If you look at our drawing AE 1.1, the existing floor plan of the existing dwelling, it quickly highlights how much of that building lies inside the required setbacks. And I'm just going to go through the existing building facade calculations in the setback. So, the south elevation, this is drawing AE 2.1, has 371 square feet of nonconforming facade area on the south side. On the east side, the existing building has about 426 square feet of nonconforming area. On the north side, it has about 285 square feet. And then, the last elevation sheet of the existing drawing, AE 2.4, indicates 1,107 square feet on the west side, which is completely inside the setbacks. And then, I will move on to the proposed structure. Drawing A 1.1 is the first floor plan, and it indicates the proposed structure's floor plan that falls inside the front setback. The front setback was improved, as John indicated, from 2.4 feet to 9.7 feet from Jerusalem Road. And looking at the facade areas, actually, before we get to that, the second floor plan, A 1.2, indicates an unfinished storage room, which is what's going to be on the second floor of this building. On the first floor, as Jeff indicated, it's going to be a three-car garage with an extra storage area. There's an interior stair to access the storage on the second floor. And then, at the basement of this building, it's going to have a small basement area, which will have a pool equipment room and a half bathroom. The half bathroom will only be accessible from the outside, from the pool level, which is a lower level of the site. Moving on to the elevations, the south side, elevation A 2.1, the nonconforming facade area is 437 square feet. So, existing was 371. So, we have about a 17% increase on the south side. On the east side, we are, the proposed is 446, existing is 426. That's about a 1% increase, essentially more or less the same. Moving to the north elevation, we are fully conforming. An existing north elevation had 285 square feet of nonconforming area, so we eliminated all of that. And the west elevation went down to 419 square feet, existing was 1,107. So, that's a 62% reduction on the west side, which is another significant reduction. And looking at the building heights, as Jeff indicated, the main roof of the proposed building is, from the existing average grade, is about 20 feet and 5 inches, and existing building is about 21 feet. To the midpoint of the highest dormer, we are at about 23 feet 4 inches. So, we are more or less about the same height as the existing structure, although a much simpler massing, simple gable roof with shed dormers on both sides. Essentially, that's a quick overview of the facade numbers, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to...
Does the board have any questions for John? Okay. Now, Jen, you had indicated that there were members of the public who would be around for some of these hearings tonight. Do we know if there are any for this one?
I don't see anybody that I would recognize. I have most of the names. If anyone is here to speak or has a question on this, if you could please submit a question during the, via the Q and A, and we will read it aloud.
Okay. While we wait for them, I have a question about the floodplain for John. The, so, there's a lot less work going on here in the floodplain than there was, thanks to the Concom. Do you still need relief from us? And are we still talking 9.7G and H? Are there arguments you'd like, or explanations you'd like to make with respect to those?
So, we are still seeking relief in the floodplain because we're doing work below that elevation. So, it's essentially armament of the existing eroding bank. So, the work that we're proposing to do will not reduce flood protection. In fact, it'll increase flood protection. It won't reduce flood capacity. It's a coastal flood zone, so anything we do, we're not obligated for any compensatory storage because we're on a coastal floodplain. So, this work is really almost repair of the floodplain, more than anything. We're not putting any structures in the floodplain. We're really just rearming an eroding bank.
So, all the work is to the, to the land, if you will, itself. No structures, the pipes are not structures in this case. Are they? I don't think so. They're subterranean pipe?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So, what we're really trying to do is just armor the outlets so that any flow that comes out of these pipes will hit a solid surface and not continue to erode this bank.
Got it. Okay. If you'll pardon me for a minute, I just want to pull out my bylaws. Little different than most, a lot less involved than most 9.7s we see. Just want to see if any of this, said G, installation and maintenance of underground utilities, provided the area affected is restored substantially to its original condition. That would be the pipes, I take it? And then, H, one, no, don't think we see, but we have, land is subject to title action, it certainly is, but there is no proposed structure.
Correct. And it's above 10 feet.
The work you're doing is above 10 feet?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Drainage doesn't cause, private sewage, okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments about the 9.7 aspects of this? Jen, did you get anybody who wanted to speak from the audience?
No, there's no one here to speak.
Okay, all right. I think that I would entertain a motion for a continuance, just for the purpose of getting to a draft decision for our next meeting.
And just a reminder, we need a roll call vote with full names, please.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. Seconded.
Do we need to have the ident, do we, Jen, do we need to have the motioner, if that's the right word?
Yes, I say, I know it's moved by David, but then, at the end, if you could all do a roll call vote?
We'll do that, fine.
Perfect.
Is there a second?
Charlie Higgins, second.
All right. All those in favor of continuing to the next hearing? We'll start with Lee.
Aye.
Dave McMorris, aye.
Matt?
Matt Watkins, aye.
Okay, and I vote aye as well, so we are continued. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Stay well.
Thank you. You too.
Very much.
All right, so the next hearing is 103 Black Rock Road. This is a continued hearing. The attendees, the addition attendees for this are going to be Brad Pierce, who is the designer, which we're promoting to a panelist, and the landowner, which is Nino Dinuno, so...
Okay.
And so, so there should be both of the panelists added there, and now you can begin the hearing.
All right, this is Woody Chick. I'm back as chair. I wonder if you'd take us again through, I know we did discuss this in March, but take us through if, of any changes made to the plans from March. I only have the March plans, I believe.
So, there have been no changes to the design since March. The drawings have provided more clarification as to the board's request in the last meeting. Some of those requests were the existing proposed area and volume calculations, the building height dimensions, as it's defined in the bylaw, and the lot area clarification due to discrepancies with the latest survey and the property data on record. In speaking with Cavanaro Consulting, they have verified that the newest plan is the most accurate in terms of the lot area, and this was also recommended to be accepted to the record by the assessor. So, I just wanted to address that first. The application is still pursuant to Section 300-8.7, extension and alterations. The proposed design has not changed from the original application. And I was hoping I could run through each page so that I can kind of navigate you as to each, each part of the board's request at the previous meeting. If we look at the second...
I just interject one thing.
Sorry.
No, that's right. Your application, which was amended back in December, still, obviously, has a lot of incorrect data, lot width, so on and so forth, coverage, lot size. I think it would be appropriate for you to amend this again with the most up-to-date figures, because the application is something we refer to, not just in our decision, but after the fact. It's permanent record.
So, are you looking at the ZVA form?
Yeah, I have one dated. They stamped February 6.
Okay, those figures haven't changed?
Well, they have. The area has changed, the lot width has changed.
Are you, sorry?
Lot width down as existing 84. That's not what the plan show, the plan show. Lot width is 120, 145 feet, so on and so forth. Anyway, I don't mean to interrupt your presentation, but I think we do need a correct listing of area regulations, item eight in our application.
Okay.
Each of these.
Okay, I'll make a note of that.
Anyway, okay.
All right. So, moving on to page 8.2, the latest aerial view of the neighborhood. 103 Black Rock Road is shown in red, and the neighbors are shown in blue. Here you can see the footprint of the existing residence of 103 Black Rock in comparison in size and footprint to the neighboring structures and their proximity. Moving on to the site plan, the next page, just a recap of the lot itself. The north and south sides are nonconforming, and the sides are conforming. The lot area is 11,131 square feet, and this is also nonconforming. The lot calculations have not changed, and the proposed building coverage is 19.9%, where 20% is the maximum allowed. This increase of 0.5%, where the proposed second-floor addition bumps out over an existing concrete patio on the south end of the building. There's no other lateral extensions proposed, and the majority of the proposed addition is directly over the first floor footprint. No proposed increase of the existing hardscape surfaces, and that's in order to minimize the land disruption. Moving on to A4, you can see the existing first floor plan. On the north side, the front north side on Black Rock Road, we have 929 square feet of existing nonconforming space. And on the south side, 337 existing nonconforming into the south setback. On the proposed first floor, these numbers don't change. We're not proposing any kind of lateral extension of the interior space. On the proposed second floor, the only increase in the nonconforming, the only increase in the nonconforming setback is on the south side, and this increase is due to the bump out on the southeast side there. And it's a 28-square-foot increase. Moving on to the elevations, this was a request at the previous, as a result of the previous meeting. The front and north facade comparison here on page A7, the proposed building increase on Black Rock Road is 48.5%. And you can see that the majority of this is following in line with the existing roof slopes, and really, the same, a similar presence that...
Hey, Annie?
I'm sorry?
Sorry.
Oh.
Can you help me? Is it my phone?
Sorry. I didn't know if you had a question. So, really, it's, this is, this facade is in keeping... So really, it's, this is, this facade is in keeping with the existing roof slopes, and really the presence that's on Black Rock Road. The increase in height is by eight feet per the definition of the building height. And we're really in keeping with similar style, and you can also, the roof drainage is also a similar pattern to what's existing. It's also worth mentioning on this, this elevation is that the, the main gable roof is actually kept low on a four-foot knee wall so as to not have such a vertical height or presence on Black Rock Road. On the page A8, this is the right west elevation. And this elevation's non-conforming on the north and south setback facade. And on this, this elevation, you can see on the left side, we're really keeping a lower height than the existing dorm, the existing shed dormer or hip dormer that's on the building now. And you can see that the new structure is really roof, slope to roof, that's actually sloping away from this side setback. On this, this facade is a 45.9% increase. And again, a lot of that area is being calculated as, as roof that's sloping away from the drawing. The rear south elevation, the increases by the gable roof and the bump out that's, that was previously mentioned into the south setback. You can see the, on the right side of the existing home there with the, the blue hatch is the bump out of the second floor. Again, the height is increasing from just under 16 feet to 24.1, and that's just an eight-foot increase. On the left elevation, the garage slope, the slope of the garage roof is matched. Essentially, we're raising the garage roof up four feet. So really trying to keep that same proportion that's existing with the existing garage. Moving on to page A11, this is the volume calculations that were requested per the last meeting. On the Black Rock Road north, north lot line, we're proposing a 41% volume increase. And really, you can see through those two volume comparisons that we're really keeping a same, a similar roof massing in comparison with the existing structure. On the south non-conforming volume, we have 42% increase. And again, you can see the similar roof lines that are matched with the shed dormers, and really a similar volume that's existing in that non-conforming setback. The last two slides are left-to-right comparison of the existing structure, kind of its condition, very poor condition now, proposed, conceptual proposed renderings of the addition on the right side. And with that, I'll turn it back to you.
Hey. Board, do you have questions?
Of Brad. Peter, but you're muted.
I'm not, not anymore, I'm not.
Not anymore, all right.
I actually don't have any questions, but I wanted to make a special point to commend Mr. Pierce for presentation with respect to the existing versus proposed, since there was quite an extensive amount of additional space being created. I'd say that, you know, this is one of the very best visual depictions of the changes that we've seen as a board, at least in my, my time on the board.
Thank you.
Good, so. Congratulations. Now who else would have a question or a comment to make? Jen?
I just wanted to, we had received some questions regarding the lot and the square footage. And so the chairman had asked me to look a bit into that yesterday, so I just wanted to clarify what Mr. Pierce was saying in that I spoke to the director of assessing and to Cavanaro Consulting. And this particular area, Black Rock Road, these lots, this particular lot has been handed down, I think this is the third generation. When the previous owner, he was essentially lived there his whole life, it was his father's and his grandfather's before that. And it's not uncommon that because of that, this lot was never professionally surveyed. So in essence, the square footage on our field cards are most likely just guessed based on the existing plot plans. In speaking with Mr. Pierce as well as John and Mr. Sullivan from Cavanaro, it makes the most sense to now record this survey because it's obviously the most accurate. So I just wanted to address that because there were, what's it called, concerns regarding that. The other issue that I didn't want to lose sight of from the last hearing were the neighbors' concern regarding drainage and the water runoff and how the board is in your purview to address that.
Yes, sorry, Lauren?
I have a question from the Q and A from David Dugan, are you ready for public question yet?
Okay, we can come back to the, do you want to, Brad, hear questions and then address the issue of drainage and that?
Sure.
Interior, whatever you want to call it, pit or, do you want to address that first?
That's whatever you prefer, that's fine.
Lauren, do comments pertain to drainage or is it a lot size issue that you want?
It's about facade size.
Well, go ahead, I mean, you've.
Okay, it says, it's, this is from, again, David Dugan in the question and answer section. "We are concerned about facade size increases, especially given the closeness to the road. It will loom much larger than the existing structure, particularly over 111 Black Rock Road. Blocks on and cast shadows. We ask the architects consider design changes to reduce facade height. A 48.5% facade increase is extreme. Per zoning bylaw 8.7.2. A, alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood." And then question two, as raised at the last meeting, "The basement has a large cistern which collects rainwater from gutters and ledge runoff, which historically has been pumped into the street running downhill to Forest Avenue. This water collects in Forest Avenue, creating a large puddle and freezing in winter, a safety hazard. We ask this be brought to the Conservation Commission to build out a proper stormwater solution." End of question.
Brad, would you like to address that issue?
Sure, so I'll start with the stormwater mitigation. The existing basement and the stormwater, in terms of sump pump, will be mitigated through the rear of the site. And I discussed this with the owner, who's also the contractor, and those sort of pooling issues that are in the basement now, and it was jerry-rigged from the previous owner out into the street, that's all going to be reversed and pumped out towards the rear of the site where the existing site is already running off, and that's kind of the more natural pattern of the site. So that's, that's the, that's how I can address the stormwater issue. In terms of the front Black Rock Road elevation, it, it's my opinion that this really isn't substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. This, the increase is, is, you know, it's in usable square footage on the second floor, but it is in keeping with a lot of the existing roof lines, and you can see that on page A7. We are keeping a shed dormer look, we are matching the same roof lines on the garage. Granted, the garage is raising up by about four feet, but it's really not substantially different from the existing structure. You can see that the massing even of the, the roof that connects the garage to the main living space is about the same volume in terms of height. We've really been conscious to keep those same roof lines and even maintain an eve line that's lower to the street so that it's not so daunting and towering in front of someone who's maybe walking the street. In terms of the proximity to the neighbor with the concern, you can see on page A2 that a lot of these, these shadowing concerns are nonexistent. The, the properties and the dwellings in this neighborhood are pretty well spread out, that the, the issue of shadow is a little bit of a stretch. It's really, in terms of an eight-foot height addition from the existing roof that's there now, I, I can't see this casting any kind of shadows even onto the street. So I'll, I can leave you with that.
Board, Peter?
Which was the, Lauren, which was the location of Mr. Dugan's house? What was his address?
He, it stated 111 Black Rock Road.
111, okay, so he's to the east, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
So as the sun comes up, Peter, in the east.
Yes.
It won't be shadowing until maybe at the very end of the day.
Yeah, exactly.
Have you, Brad, evaluated the facades of the four other houses in Black Rock? Number 93, 100, 110, and 111? In terms of, you know, scale and massing, whether you, I don't expect you have done a detailed.
I, I have in terms of a visual study in terms of pictures, but I would imagine that measuring all these houses would be invasive and.
Yeah, no, I didn't, I didn't expect you to measure, but just, you know, speak to the issue of neighborhood and is this facade in keeping or out of keeping?
Right, so the, the style that we are proposing is in keeping with the common architectural aesthetic of this neighborhood and Cohasset. It isn't the New England shingle style, and is not, you know, an unfamiliar architecture to, to this neighborhood and the town alike.
And scale, massing?
In terms of the scale, it's very similar. We have a two-story structure directly across the street, a two-story structure at one, at number 100. And the property at 93, I believe, is a more of a ranch structure. But there, there are similar heights, and it's also a similar roof, roof style in terms of the gable-style roof. And it's very similar to our proposed addition. I think number 110 is also a very similar aesthetic to, to our proposal as well.
Okay. Board, I followed the, the issue of, only to a point of water runoff. As, as you discharge or the applicant disccharges toward the rear, is that likely to slope down and, you know, impact number 111 or number 282 forest? Particularly in the winter, I think we, you know, first saw this property in the winter and there was some icing on the street. Now, I know you'll be redirecting that toward the rear, but I'm curious as to whether redirecting toward the rear will also impact the neighbors to the east.
Well, the, the, the existing house has downspouts and, and, you know, some drainage that is already directing some of the roof runoff to that area. The basement sump pump, we can discharge it to, you know, the side property line or the rear, it can have a multi-location runoff. It's something that I can maybe have the owner and contractor speak, speak to.
Board, I mean, how do you? Peter?
It strikes, I, I spent some time up there just on Sunday, and it strikes me as though there's a lot of land to the rear that is presently undeveloped, if I'm not mistaken. And there's the appearance of, you know, a back 40 there, but most of it is owned by others. However, it does slope away from the house at a non-precipitous, but, but, you know, certainly material slope once you get past the ledge. So you, you're not proposing any hardscape changes. Do you have, has anybody done any thinking about how you would pipe water away from the house out to the rear?
Well, looking at the aerial of the existing house now, I can see that the southeast, southwest corner of the lot looks to be the, the most opportunistic for any kind of underground discharge in terms of trenching. The southeastern side is majority of that portion of the lot is ledge. So to answer your question, I, I would think that it would be on the, on the southwestern side. And that's kind of the back, back end of the existing driveway there.
Yeah.
Where it slopes down. I, I think it should also be mentioned too, is that the, the existing owner has done a substantial amount of cleanup to, to the property, and it's already seen substantial improvement since he's taken ownership. I, I just think that's worth mentioning.
Other board numbers we haven't heard from Dave or Matt or Charlie or Lee?
Well, I have a question. The, I understand the massing. I walk by this house all the time, and I actually walked by it again tonight. And the difference between this house and the, and the rest of the houses on Black Rock Road is that this house will be the closest one to the road. And I understand that all the other houses on the street, most of them are two stories. But they're also mostly on larger lots. You know, this is going to be a 3,300-square-foot house on an 11,000-square-foot lot. And most of the other houses that are two stories are set considerably farther back from the road, and they're on much larger lots. This one is in 10 feet from the road. And the house, as it's built right now, most of the second floor appears to be in the back and not close to the street. So I guess my question is, was there any consideration for configuring this so that the house would, it would be consistent with the way it is now, with most of the second floor towards the back rear? Lots that aren't developed and not right on the street.
Yes, well, one of the first things that I did consider was the, the, this close proximity to Black Rock Road. And really, when you take a look at the existing eve lines, I tried to match those heights as best as possible so that the presence on Black Rock Road is more engaged with familiar roof and eaves. And even the portion of the building that is connecting, connecting the garage to the main house on the second floor is set back further from the street so that it doesn't have that presence that I, I think you're concerned about. There's also a dormer on the existing front elevation. And so there's that height presence that's, that's really there because of that dormer. So I really don't feel as though the presence of our addition will really be so, so much of a different experience when passing by than the existing house. And it, and we are keeping those, those shed dormers. And it and we are keeping those those shed dormers, you you know, set back from the street in order to kind of maintain um less of a vertical look um from the front elevation.
Other comments, questions, board? Nothing. Jenny, you hearing anymore from uh our audience, virtual audience?
Yes, we have a few um questions, a couple that you had me look into. So uh Mr. Dugan asked if the drainage solution needs a more structured plan. Um does that proposal will run will run stormwater into neighborhood property? This is a topic that needs to be reviewed by conservation. Uh then Mark Friedel clarification or question two, will ZBA make it a condition of approval that Conservation Command Commission weigh in on how water will be mitigated? Uh Mr. Friedel said the last owner used the property as a commercial lobstering staging area, lobster pots were sprayed with kerosene, bows were painted, et cetera. Has the property been tested for any environmental issues that need to be mitigated? And then David Lucia, was there any consideration for the front of the house to face Black Rock Road versus the side lot of ninety-three Black Road? So that's a lot. Um the last meeting, the board had asked that I reach out to speak to our conservation agent, which I did. Um and conservation and stormwater are based on when the shovel hits the dirt, and this is going up. So I think the drainage would follow more um in the purview of your conditioning um and making sure that something's being mitigated. But again, um I only spoke with the conservation twice, but this this would not be going before conservation, from what I understand.
Hmm, okay. Lauren? Any comments in your from your standpoint?
Hi, sorry, Woody. Um Jen actually read all the comments from the question and answer just now.
Okay. All right, so there is an issue or concern on uh water discharge and the request or a suggestion that, you know, could the uh house or at least the second floor be uh moved back away from Black Rock? What's the board's point of view on this? I I don't want to commit, by the way. Um will the board make it a condition X, Y, Z? We aren't deliberating yet. We're holding a hearing. So we're not deciding on uh conditions per se, but uh tonight. Dave, Charlie, anybody? Well, I, for one, would like to see a discharge plan um appended to this um application. Rather than just leave it, we'll discharge it out the back into the southwest and so on and so forth, maybe. I mean, I I think I'd like something a little more definitive.
Um, it's Peter.
Yeah.
We're looking at this as an eight-point-seven. So um, you know, we we don't have flood plan considerations or anything else. Uh, we have not traditionally um tried to engineer things. Um, how would you think that a discharge plan would play into a decision we would write with respect to eight-point-seven?
Well, I think, you know, when it comes down to um, you know, substantially more detrimental, blah, blah, uh or injurious to the public health or hazardous, um I think we could reference a plan that's been submitted to us. Even if it isn't within the purview of the Conservation Commission, at least we would have something to look at and make sure that it gets constructed as as and and the neighbors could take a look at it if they have a concern. I mean, I don't know, I I think I think Lee summed it up pretty well. It's a very small lot, and this water has to go somewhere, and it has been going somewhere, I I recognize, but I wouldn't want to see it um exacerbate the situation.
Well, we're gonna have the same hardscape that we had before.
Right.
Effectively have, I think, the same roof area that we had before uh because we're not going out, we're just going up. Um so I think we're probably gonna have a similar volume of water to what we had before. Uh and it's um proposed to be ducted, if you will, in a different direction, a direction that makes more sense uh for sure. Um but I just, speaking for myself, I'm not certain that in the context of an eight-point-seven, if I got more um more plans, that I would know how to incorporate them scientifically into a uh into a decision. Now, I may not be writing the decision, I probably won't. I mean, the odds are only one in five or something that I would be, but I'm not sure what I'd say. Um, and we could ask for one, and um then I don't know what we'd do with it.
How does the rest of the board feel? Dave?
Um, well, it sounds like the existing condition is probably the most objectionable. Almost everything that can be done would be better than what's there now. So, you know, I I do understand drainage into other people's property is going to be a concern for whose property might get drained, too. And there's some justification for looking for some assurances that it's not going to create a problem for somebody else. You know, I think even if we saw a plan that shows some dry wells to to keep the water from flowing elsewhere, you know, would be helpful. I'm not sure it's very much in our jurisdiction, and I'm not sure that we have the expertise to determine that it's going to be any worse than what's there now, but it's I think something we should at least take pay some attention to.
Matt, how do you feel? Charlie? Charlie, you're muted. Can we unmute Charlie? There you go, Charlie.
Yeah, I I see no problem in requesting a design plan for uh what they propose to do and and shooting it out to the southwest. Uh and uh uh then our decision would just say in the final construction be uh according to the plans that's submitted. And we will not be saying that necessarily is that solves the problem, but a- a- at least there'll be something uh rather than just a an intention.
That might not even be acted on. Um, you're saying, yes. Matt?
Yeah, I I think I'm in agreement with with with, you know, what I heard from David and 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 Charlie. I'm just trying to think, um, and I know it's not apples for apples, but I know like the Greek church, for example, um believed that we had could I don't have the decision in front of me, but I do know that we scrutinize that drainage plan to some degree, not to engineer it, but more so based on concerns from some of the nearby property owners of of the flow there. And again, I know that it's not apples to apples, but I think to give you some confidence for whoever has to write the decision that the drainage pattern is not going to be more detrimental to the neighborhood is um is valuable. And I do agree with Peter, too. I mean, we're not, we're we're going up, so, you know, on on paper, you could say it doesn't look like it will be, but I think um to capture some of the means and methods that would go into effectively managing the drainage plan um could be could be valuable to see.
Yeah, it's an opportunity, perhaps, probably, to improve a situation. Um whether improved by a little or a lot's another matter, but um yeah, I follow you. It it's not gonna get worse, most likely, but this is an opportunity to maybe uh re- reduce uh some impingement in neighboring properties. What about the issue of um um kerosene and so on and so forth and painting lobster pots and that that again is not within our purview. It's kind of a board of health thing, I I would think. But um, does anybody else have a point of view on that?
Yeah, just off the cuff. I I mean, I I don't know that any any other property, right, unless the EPA has stepped in in town, would be subject to that.
To that, I I think it would be a board of health issue, if anything.
In any in any event, the changes that are contemplated and are so and require zoning relief have nothing to do with any subsoil or water table pollution.
Right.
And uh, that's really not in our purview.
Right, I think we'd agree with agree with that. Okay, other uh any other comments or questions of the applicant? I I certainly would like to continue this as we did the other hearing uh for purposes of deliberation and decision-making, but I would also ask Brad and or the applicant to provide us with a um a plan um showing how the discharge would be affected uh in the toward the southwest of this lot area. Water runoff, okay?
Uh a- and are you looking for this um as a kind of a topography study? Uh I'm I'm still not understanding as as to the plan for the discharge. This is this will take grading slopes and um kind of more effort than what is really uh in involved with the site plan so far. So I just want to kind of have a general idea of what you're looking for.
What would your proposition be? You you said it would.
I it would be an arrow on a plan that's that's that shows the discharge from the basement. Um and and that's kind of where, you know, that that can show where the protrusion through the foundation wall would be and out towards um the most opportunistic part of the site so that we can um drain the water away and um not create any kind of issue for.
And where the water would come out. Yeah.
Or, yes.
And where the water would would actually discharge or.
Right, and as I mentioned before, the the similar um roof massing um does play into the similar uh locations for downspouts, et cetera. So there's a lot of existing runoff that that's uh created from the roof that will be similar to what we're proposing.
Now, I'd like to see a proposal. I don't think it has to be thoroughly engineered.
Well, I mean, there's a down there's a downspout shown on the existing on the existing building in the front, and there is no downspout shown on the proposed building.
Yeah, that's a it's a photorealistic rendering. It's the doubt that not every uh little intricate detail is on those on those conceptual renderings. There's certain nuts and bolts that get left out when you're creating these images, unfortunately. As part of um the proposal for the drainage plan, I could put downspouts on here and show um, you know, where duck where water is diverging away from the building. Um but in terms of getting you know, information that's three hundred feet away from the building, where the water actually ends up is uh kind of my question as to how I can uh come to come to that um conclusion.
Well, it looks it looks to me like as long as you're not running it down the driveway or into the street, i- if it's gonna run into the trees, it's not gonna be a problem.
Right.
Is it gonna run into the trees?
Well, that's why I said the the southwest corner would be, and it also it almost looks like that's kind of how the natural erosion of the site is happening right now. Um as you can see in the the aerial on A two. Um and and the other side, the opposite side of the east side is uh predominantly ledge. So um again, I I see not really any other opportunity on site to discharge the water water other than the uh southwest corner.
Well, you'd have to do is show us where the uh discharge point is.
Absolutely.
You don't have to follow every little trickle down.
Right.
Five hundred yards away.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page as to uh kind of what what the discharge plan really entails.
I think it's really part of a a site location. It'll go from point A to point B.
Well, currently, I'm pretty sure it drains towards the street right now.
Right.
Right.
Because most of it is is most of the property is all ledge.
Well, the the there's um, yes, there is. Most of the property on the southeast side is ledge. Um, I wouldn't say all the property is ledge. Um on the the driveway side, that's um there's a lot of uh naturally occurring earth on that side. Meaning not infill.
Well, our interest is to get the water out of the street and and put it in the toward the rear. You've
Right.
outlined uh a conceptual.
But then the rear slopes off, the rear slopes off into somebody else's property.
Yeah. But I don't see the somebody else. I don't know how close they are.
Um, their house, hmm.
It's 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 forever.
The house is not close, but it's sort of, it's gonna go down a hill and dump it into somebody else's property.
Oh, it'll also dissipate, I don't think.
It'll be the the same drainage design as is typical with residential construction with downspouts and and gutters. It's um, we're we're not really planning to civil engineer the site um for plumbing or you know, any kind of pumping of exterior water. Um there will be pumping of interior water. Um and that can be shown on a plan um in in terms of the man water management from the roof will just be as 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 mentioned, it'll be typical with residential construction.
Sure. Well, why don't you get us a proposal and uh submit it? I I don't think we need, as you say, to have it fully engineered and uh actually, there's no obligation on the part of the uh of a landowner to protect or enhance neighboring properties, strange as it may sound. I think you you've got an idea what we're what we're.
Yeah, absolutely, I do. I do, yep.
So Jen, anything else, or should we?
Yeah, I mean, we've had another question about the stormwater, and shouldn't this go to conservation for stormwater? And um again, all I've said, we've text, we have checked into that. Um my understanding is I've sat in on a lot of hearings with planning regarding stormwater, and all I'll say is my understanding is that per the bylaw, they have to make it better than what's existing. Um a store, they don't have to eradicate it, they have to make it better. And um so any plan of construction, hopefully, that that you will be getting from him will show that the the plan will be better. And so I think that it's a good thing for the board to have, but I I have checked with conservation just to address others' concerns they've been asking.
Okay.
And that's all I had. And then I think you just move to continue it. And by the way, the, go ahead.
Uh, there's another question.
There is, okay.
Uh, it's anonymous. We we can't take an anonymous. We need a name.
Okay.
Um, all right, so.
I would make a motion that we continue this hearing until uh June, what is it?
Second.
June second. Okay, um we expect that one um supplemental submission. I don't know. Does the board need any other information that is not before us tonight? If not, I've moved that we continue the hearing.
David McMorris, second?
Great, all in favor. So David McMorris?
David McMorris, aye.
Peter Gertica?
Aye.
Matthew Watkins?
Matthew Watkins, aye.
Charlie Higginson? You're muted, but other than that, can you unmute him?
Yep.
Charlie?
Charlie Higginson, aye.
Lee Darst?
Aye.
And Woody Chitik, aye. Okay.
Thank you. Um so the next hearing is um ten Jerusalem Road. Um they weren't able to attend tonight. They will have information. This is the hearing um where they were most likely requesting with to withdraw as they've redesigned to um not need relief. However, um they have not been able to complete the drawing, so they just asked if they could um continue it to the June second, and they will have some information prior to then.
Okay, I'd make a motion to accept the request. Okay, I'd make a motion to accept the request to continue the hearing until June 2nd. On 10, what is it?
June 2nd.
10, 10 Jerusalem Road. Do we have a second?
Second.
David McMorris, seconds. All in favor?
We need, uh, roll call, please.
Roll call. Say your name and aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
All right.
Charlie Higginson, aye.
Lee Darst, aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Woody Chitik, aye?
David McMorris, aye.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much. All right. The next hearing is for 706 Jerusalem Road. This was at our last hearing. You have not heard this. It was just continued in May when we didn't know how we were going to be handling these hearings per the COVID situation. We have Alyssa Jones, who is, I'm promoting her to panelist. And, um, let's see, the bakers, which I think is the, the landowner, so promote that. And then we have Jay Pampari, who is, who has written a letter. I'll leave him as an attendee, but he did write a letter of support. And that's it. So you're free to start. Alyssa is on.
Okay. So who will be presenting? Alyssa, will you be presenting, or will the Baker family?
Um, I'll, I'll start. Thank you. Hi, I'm Alyssa Jones, and I am representing Kristen and Brian at 706 Jerusalem Road, and they're present as well and happy to participate in the meeting. I prepared the architectural plans, and Kavanaugh Consulting has prepared the, the site plan. And 706 Jerusalem Road is a pre-existing non-conforming lot, and the existing structures built in around the 1950s, and it falls within the east side yard setback. It's 8.7 feet from the property line when 20 feet is required. The existing structure is about 1,700 square feet, three-bedroom, raised ranch-style house, about 500 square feet of that is in the lower level. So we are asking to construct a second-story addition of about 626 square feet. This is going to be above half of the existing structure, and a portion of this addition, 224 square feet, will fall within the side yard setback and increase the height of the structure within the setback. So we, we chose to locate the addition on this side of the house to preserve the existing, the, the existing kitchen and vault-to-ceiling on the opposite side of the house. We've tried to keep the height and facade of the addition as minimal as possible. If you flip to page, A 2.0, you'll see the elevations and the calculations of the facade. We tried to keep the roof lines shallow, and the ridge, the highest point of the addition, is located outside of the setback. The, the increase from the existing bridge to the new roof line within the setback is only 6.3 feet. The area where, where you'll see the biggest change would be the facade to the east elevation, and this is an increase of 230 square feet. This increase is less than what the zoning board approved in September 2017, when the previous owners were granted relief for an addition off the rear of the house. And in this addition, the facade was increasing over 500 square feet. And this addition was never built by the previous owners, so we're kind of looking at a alternative to that addition. And as to the larger neighborhood and any neighbors to the rear, this lot is on a hillside, and the addition should have, you know, very minimal impact to any other neighbors. So, you know, we're, we're happy to answer any questions that you have, but we're hoping you find that this addition is, you know, not any more detrimental than the existing, you know, non-conforming use to the neighborhood.
Okay. Questions from the board? What a silent group.
I know you said that you didn't decide to go up on the other end, which would not have been in the setback, because of the existing kitchen. Is that correct?
Yes, that space is, it's a, like a cathedral kitchen space. So, you know, we would essentially have to renovate the kitchen and put in a flat ceiling and build up above the kitchen if we, if we moved over to that side. So this was, you know, kind of, you know, we're, we know we're asking for relief, but we felt like this was the most economical decision for the project.
Had you, may seem a strange question, but had you considered adopting and going forth with the plan that had been previously approved for the other owner?
Um, we did look into that, and, you know, I think it, it was going to be, you know, probably a, a larger, more expensive project, because we would be putting in a new foundation. So, you know, once again, going back to probably cost of construction, we felt like this was the best decision for the clients.
And there's, may I assume, I, I can't remember exactly what you said, but less of this proposed structure in front of us tonight is in the setback than had been in the proposal from 2017?
Um, the, the number that I was, that I took time to compare was looking at the, the east side elevation, thinking about the neighbor on that side as being the, the main person affected. And the increase in facade on that side is 230 square feet. And compared to the previous design, which was 517 square feet, so.
Sure.
Yeah, so it's, you know, less of a facade, but we are going up higher versus going out towards the back of the property. And I, I believe the neighbor who wrote, I believe the neighbor who wrote approval is that neighbor to the side. Maybe the bakers could answer that question?
Yeah, it was Charlie. Um, we, we spoke with him. Another reason we're not going back is there's a lot of ledge in the backyard, and if we did put in a new foundation there, we were worried about messing up the water table that's in our backyard currently.
Let's rise up. Okay, board, have at it. Peter?
I actually don't have any questions. I was pleased to see that it was that neighbor to the east who was really the only neighbor who probably would have any issue with the proposal. I would like to go back and see what we approved before, because I, for one, don't remember.
I know.
And so perhaps, Jen, could you find us that?
It's in the packet.
Yeah, I emailed it to you.
Oh, we got it? All right.
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see the email. I'm, I've read through the physical packet and had it in front of me, but I don't see it.
Is it, it's in that packet as well?
Okay, if it's, if it's as advertised, no reason to think not. I, I think less within the setback is, is good. I mean, they could, the prior owners could have gone forth, yes, with a somewhat lower, but larger, probably facade and massing. So I, I think it's beneficial, that, that they planned itself and scaled back versus what we had approved three years ago, two and a half years ago. But have we heard from any neighbors?
Hi. So we have received one call, but they're not on this call. We're from the people who live above on the hill concerned about view. But I sent them the decisions and every, and all of the filings and did not hear back. We also received a letter from Justin Pampari, who wrote a letter of support, which I'll put in the record. And that would be it.
Okay, so the neighbor to the rear, to the rear of the house where, where you go up?
Right. I think those are the condos up on Diab. They're very far away and they're up high.
Yeah.
From what, from what I could see on the plan. But they, they were also sent everything that Alyssa filed.
Right. No, but I was just thinking that it's, you know, the house itself, by the, by the time you get to the rear lot line, that rear lot line's a good 10 feet taller than the land that the house is going on, and the, the house. I, I don't think you'd probably see the, you know, if you were a neighbor upwind, you probably wouldn't see much of this house. Questions on the part of the board? Jeez.
Got any?
David? No, he's muted. Charlie?
I have no questions.
Lee? Lee Darst. Oops, she must be muted, but I don't see the mute sign. Oh, well. Lee?
She looks frozen. I don't think she, I don't think she's connected anymore.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, I, my internet is really messed up, so I have it, I'm listening on my phone, and it keeps freezing on the screen. I don't have any questions.
And David?
I don't have any questions. My only comment is I think the increases in non-conforming facade are pretty modest.
Yeah. I would, I would agree. It's, yeah. On, on the overall, the overall plan, I, I mean, it's, it's, whoops. So, well, we all have the decision that was done in 2017, and we can read it at our leisure, but I would like to make a motion to continue the hearing until June 2nd, really for the purposes of digesting that decision and, and doing deliberations and possibly having a draft decision. So I would move that we continue.
I'll second that.
Move and second it. Voice slow. Lee?
Lee Darst, aye.
Great. Charlie?
Charlie Higginson, aye.
Matt?
Matt Watkins, aye.
Peter?
Peter Gertica, aye.
David McMorris?
David McMorris, aye.
Woody Chitik, aye. Okay, so we'll continue it. I don't think we'll need any other information from you between now and then, but if so, Jen, we'll get ahold of you.
I will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so last but not least, we have a new hearing, which is 88 BB Street. This is a doc. The, just John Cavanero is representing the landowner Donald Ryan, who I will promote to. He is now a panelist, so he is on here as well.
Okay, John, will you be presenting, or Donald?
Yes, I will be presenting.
Okay. I think we're all.
First, I, I have to admit, this is, I haven't been doing too many of these, but probably about a half a dozen in different towns, and this has been a very well-run meeting. I must commend Jen and Lauren for their very adept skill set in managing this. So.
Boy, John must want something bad.
No, I just, I have to say that. This is, this has done, this has been done pretty well, and Peter gets best background, by the way. Other than that, you guys are pretty familiar with a, a similar project like this that we had in front of you about a year ago for 130 Gammons Road. It's, it's somewhat of a unique set of circumstances for a dock, per se, because it's not the conventional pier ramp and float system that you normally see for a dock facility. A typical dock facility has that pier section that occupies the water sheet and has a ramp and a float seasonally that comes off of that. And that system is a traditional dock that requires a Chapter 91 license. In some locations, folks have the ability to affix a landing, which is not really a pier, on an elevated landform and then enable a ramp and a float to come off of that. And the ramp and float, similar to a typical dock, are seasonally removed as well. So in, in this particular location at 88 BB Street, we have that elevated landform geography similar to at 130 Gammons Road, where we have this pronounced peninsula of land that jets out into Little Harbor. So rather than create a more infrastructure than necessary, what we're proposing here, similar to 130, is a modest landing that is actually, will be designed to be removable. It'll be affixed to ledge outcropping, and the ramp, the seasonal ramp and the float will come off of that, and that will get removed seasonally in the off-season. So this will not trigger a Chapter 91 license. This does require an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, which we have filed for, but the Conservation Commission has yet to start having the Zoom public hearing. So I'm hopeful that after this successful hearing, this word will spread around Town Hall, that we'll start to see more of these, and perhaps we'll be in front of the Conservation Commission either this month or soon thereafter. So as far as this application, we've submitted a simplified dock application. There's very little impact on the ground, simply the, the four fixed fastening anchors that will be typically drilled and epoxied into the ledge, and the landing will sit on top of that, similar to what we did at Gammons Road. And then the ramp and the float, again, affects, they essentially float above the water. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Charlie Higginson. John, why doesn't this trigger 91?
Because there's no permanent structure that will sit below mean high water. That's what triggers a Chapter 91 license, when you need to occupy the waters of the United States with a, a fixed structure. A ramp and the float is really what was called a 10A permit through the local harbor master.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How about our dockmeister, David McMorris? But you're muted now.
It's pretty simple, straightforward, and I, I think having these things where there's nothing in the water permanently is a great way to go.
What does the, John, what does a harbor master have to decide on, a rule on, in order to give a 10A permit?
So we've, we've talked to the harbor master in the past, and although she has jurisdiction over Little Harbor, she doesn't honestly pay an overabundance of attention in Little Harbor, mainly because the, the vessels are so limited in size. It's generally kayaks and flotation devices because Cunningham Bridge. But it's an annual permit that gets issued, a 10A permit by the harbor master. And that's.
And, and what, what, what is she looking for in? And what, what, uh, can, what is she looking for in either giving or denying the permit?
Just to let, it's really no, uh, submittal of any sort, other than what, that the, her legal authority is over the Little Harbor, over the waters of Little Harbor. So she has the authority to issue basically occupancy permits on the water.
Okay.
Whether or not everyone has one is another question.
Peter?
Uh, just as a, uh, a, a sort of a point of reference, uh, if you look at the tree to my right, uh, there's a mass in the middle of it, and that is 130 Gammons Road. So that's where the other, uh, last year's permit was. No, no, uh, no, no point intended there.
Yeah. None taken. Okay. Matt, what about you?
I don't think I have any, any, um, questions on it.
My only other question is, who wrote the decision on 130 Gammons Road?
I can look that up right now for you. Um, I had that up. Uh, maybe that's not for me. It's signed by Jen. I can't tell who wrote it.
Who voted?
Uh, let's see.
I can find out who wrote it.
Okay. Cause I'm sure it's on their computer.
Yeah.
Was, was, uh, David a voting, um, was he one of the three?
It was, it was, uh, Woody, Lee Darst, Peter, Matt and Dave. All you guys were there.
Oh, okay.
Everyone but Charlie is, was not, Charlie was not there.
Lee, did you write it by chance?
You're muted.
All right. Jen will find out. Jen will find out. It was probably David.
Cause I think David's written every dock decision since I've been on the board.
No, Matt, Matt got a couple.
Yeah.
Nope. David, it was you.
It was? Okay. I'll find it.
I was just looking at my files.
I haven't, I haven't, if you need it.
Okay. That might make life easy. Um, I don't have any questions.
Nor do I.
You, you know, the only question I have is, um, one of the things I don't see on the simplified application that we should have put on there is how far from the sidelines of the property. It actually doesn't matter on.
Yeah.
Remember this is a very unique property and, uh, one of our, uh, essays through it, uh, we actually think it of variance because there effectively are no sidelines. I mean, there are, there are no butters to the side. Effectively it's all water.
Uh, actually this one, we do have it on the application and it says the distance from the property sidelines is zero feet. John?
Yeah, I, I guess so. The, the water, according to the colonial ordinance, the, the lot goes to the mean low water. So, um, as Peter said, this, this is obviously such a unique lot. Um, we, the boundary itself is, is low water. Uh, we have zero because the float actually goes beyond low water.
Okay.
So that's why we have, and we, the ramp crosses, even though, again, where do you draw the line with the structure? Because the ramp and the float are removed seasonally. Um, the platform is also a removable structure technically. Um,
But they're still structures?
Yep. So I, I guess to, to be the most conservative, you'd say zero because it crosses the low water line.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. No further questions? Do we have, uh, comments from neighbors or citizens, Jen?
We do not.
Okay. I'd make a motion to continue this hearing for the, as we always do, for the purpose of getting a draft decision and deliberate.
I'll second that.
Okay. Moving seconded. That was seconded by David McMorris.
Oh, that was Matt.
Matt.
Matt, I'm sorry. I was looking over that way. Okay. So all in favor?
Nope. Roll call.
Roll call. No, that's what I mean. It's.
Oh.
Woody Tredakai? It's moving seconded.
Lee Darst, aye.
Charlie Higginson, aye.
Matt?
Matt Watkins, aye.
And David?
David McMorris, aye.
Peter, we got you. Did we? No.
No. Peter Gertica, aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Well done.
This isn't a bad way to conduct a meeting, actually. It's the privacy of our homes and.
I know. I know.
It's getting, uh, getting a little warm. What?
He said you can turn off your camera and have a snack. It's, it works out great.
It does. Just remember to mute it or you hear the crunching. Um, yeah, it is really easy. It's the, now that we've done it like this, it's, it's, it's a daunting task at the beginning, but it's, um, very user friendly to sit here. And I couldn't have done it without Lauren, but I think Lauren should be able to go have a glass of wine now since she's had a long day.
I think she's been, uh, uh, partaking throughout. See, her screen goes blank and then.
I didn't want to bore you with staring. Thank you all for having me. It was nice to meet some of you virtually who haven't met yet.
Okay. There, there's one other thing that, that, um, on our agenda that was an item that was not reasonably anticipated by me, uh, in advance of the meeting. And that is, um, David has raised an interesting issue, which I won't go into in depth here, on, um, a subdivision of a lot and, uh, in a downtown business district that exists out in Beachwood of all places. And I think, um, Jen told me on the phone that while she's not in her office until tomorrow, she does have notes on this very situation, David, and will talk to, uh, our special town council as well, is in terms of what kind of relief, if any, is needed. Um, the, the contractor or the owner has made the assumption and gotten a building permit based on, on the assumption that no, uh, special permit is needed. That may or may not hold water, but, um, I'd rather hear from Jen and, um, Charis first. You get their point of view, um, having researched this, and then we can take a look.
Right. And I, um, I will do that. I've already done a little bit of research and, um, reached out to Bob and I will, I'll be in the office tomorrow morning and we'll pull that. Um, and I'll, I've looked at the permits, which are electronic online. I don't see anything, but it doesn't mean that I'm missing it by address. So.
What do you mean? You don't see anything? You don't see?
I don't see any permits.
No building permit?
Is there, is there a structure on the, on the lot, David?
There was, there was a structure that was demolished.
Right. The existing.
And a concrete foundation has been poured for one structure and dug out for the second one.
Okay. So the A and R specifically says if they need zoning relief, there's a stamp on it that they, doesn't mean they don't have to come for a special permit. So let me just do some more research, uh, with my files in the office. I have a lot of stuff that I have access to, but that would be in a different office.
Okay. So I, it, as I said, it, without facts and, and, and a concept in front of us, it doesn't make any sense to talk about this issue now. But when we take a look at it, I, I think we can develop a point of view as to whether or not, um, zoning relief is needed.
Question?
Yeah.
Um, is this another case where an A and R was granted based on lot lines being, uh, uh, switched around? And if so, was it?
It's one lot that was divided into two. There was one structure on the lot, a pre-existing structure that was demolished. There are two structures being built and no special permit was applied for, although special permits are required in a downtown business district for single-family residents.
So I know that he, um, has the existing lot and he purchased additional land from a neighbor to make that a conforming lot. Um, but that, you know, towards, and so it's a conforming lot. Um, but if he needs a special permit for downtown business, um, he may have only pulled a foundation permit, but at the same time, he's going to need it if that's the case. So I've asked Bob and he'll be in tomorrow, so we can look further into it.
Okay. That's interesting. All right. And, you know, the anomaly is up in Beachwood. I think it was not just this one property. There are, Dave, what would you say, six, seven, eight properties at least?
All residential. There's one property that was once actually a business and now is, you know, multi-family with two collapsing structures. It's, was the business. Everything else that's in the district is all a residence.
But it is so, but you know, they are in a, on a downtown business. All you need is for a single family dwelling, a 5,000 square feet lot. I mean, you know, there's much.
There's some 30,000 square foot lots in there with one house on them.
So they theoretically or, or technically, you could have a lot of subdivision going on.
Right.
But you need access in frontage.
Yeah. No, I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah.
It's just.
Yeah.
Anyway.
So I will, I will definitely look into that, um, for all of you. I don't want to get too deep in it until I pull everything. Um, we do need to make assignments for decisions.
Okay. Well, I guess David, um.
David gets 130.
Yeah, because you're a good guy. Uh, you, just make sure you do change the names of the applicants. So you get, you know.
That's my specialty, Woody.
I know. Well, let, let's take it from the top. I'm recused on the Vanderwild starvation, um, situation. Peter, how do you want to make that?
I, I will, I will do that unless someone else wants to do that. Don't all, don't all.
It's all yours.
It's all, it sounds like it's all yours. Um.
It, it, and that's one of the reasons I asked that bunch of questions about the 9.7, because it wasn't quite clear what they were asking for, other than that they had mentioned it. And I, if we have to write an opinion about it, I'd like to be able to cite something. So I think I can. I mean, we, we'll, we'll debate it, uh, next week, but you know, I don't see this one as being contentious, but who knows?
Yeah. Okay. So you've got it for next month, not next week.
Yeah.
Um, we have the, uh, 103 Black Rock Road, as well as the most recent, uh, hearing, the second story addition. Um, I don't know who, anyway, I, I'm happy to do one of these decisions, but, um, does anybody feel passionately about one of these, uh, cases? Not going to do both.
Wants to write one.
Wants to write one, or you get?
I said, I'll do 706.
All right.
I don't want to do 103.
Okay. I figured that. Um, Matt, Charlie, do either of you, um, feel passionately about 103 or want me to tackle it?
No, probably 103. I, it sounded like Summer Street to me. I cannot.
I, I am.
Wait, you get, you get the chills when you, when Summer Street comes up. It's not the virus. It's.
With all due respect, Matt, I think Summer Street was much harder. This one is not Summer Street, but.
I agree. I agree.
Okay.
But it's so close to the road. It is so close to the road.
Just remember, we are recording, so.
I understand. I'm just saying that that's.
I'll, I'll, I'll give a draft and we can, um, whack at it. Okay? And the other thing that I think here is this, um, 10 Jerusalem Road. I, I asked them, by the way, after we heard it a couple of months ago, and I heard that they wanted to withdraw because they didn't need relief, um, for their sake, to show us why they don't need relief. That lot is, uh, on 10 Jerusalem Road is just full of, you know, non-conformities.
And I, they're, they're more than happy to share with us. She's.
Yeah. I mean, it's for their sake. I, I find it very difficult to believe that they are not going to need relief. If they, if, even if they move the house back and go up, it's almost impossible not to build outside the setback.
Yeah. And that, that presentation that they made was so scattered.
Yeah. It was on a plan that we, we, is obsolete and we're not proposing this anymore. And I was getting confused between the, what existed and the draft of November and so on and so forth. Yeah. So it's to their.
Sit in terms.
It's definitely to the addition.
Where, where does Jen?
Yeah.
Sit in terms of its dependency with, uh, Bob?
Oh, with Bo, with Bob? No, he knows that it's still on your agenda, that we're waiting to hear back and that we haven't seen any plans to determine if they don't need relief or not.
But ha, but have they given Bob plans to approve?
No, they're still writing, they're still drafting them.
Okay.
So they're, they're still in the redesign and design phase.
I'd say there's probably a 50% chance it'll come before us at some point, but that's all I, I mean, no, no great insight there. It's just a strange lot. So, hey, I heard that Bob had a, has a bad back.
He did. He's all, he's much, he's all better now.
Oh, okay.
He was here. Before my surgery, he was out at the same time, like two weeks before that. We were like a whole month, not seeing each other. We were a mess. And then I came back for a week and then COVID. So it's been.
Yeah.
Long. It's, it's been an awful year.
Okay. Well, I'd like to have somebody make a motion that we adjourn.
I move we adjourn. Charlie Higginson.
All right. And who wants to second that?
I'll second.
I will second it. Lee Darst.
Okay. Lee is seconded. Okay. All in favor by name?
Charlie Higginson, aye.
David McMorris, aye.
Peter Gertica, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Woody Tredakai?
Lee Darst, aye.
Okay. We got it.
All right. We got it. Thank you all so much.
Thank you all.
For putting it, oh, one last thing. I'm going to send you all links in the next week to redo your town email. Who, who uses their town email? Raise your hand. That's what I thought. Oh, Lee. Lee and David, you guys are good. And I'll send you the rest of your reads. So we have one location where all of your ZBA documents are. It's going to make life easier.
I tried to log in and it refused me because it's, it's been so long.
It's been so long.
Since I've used it, that I was declared ineligible.
Just so you know, I don't plan to use it unless you send me an email on my regular email telling me to use it for a given point in time. Then I will use it.
All right. So it's gonna, it's gonna, it's bringing, everybody's trying to do just one location because working remotely is particularly hard, having to do multiple emails. So, um, but I will do my best. That's all I can promise.
Okay. And Jen?
Yes?
Can you send me the 103 Gammons in Word form?
Is it the 130, 130 Gammons in, in Word? Yes, I can. I actually have it up on my screen right now. So I'll get it to you. All right. It was wonderful, wonderful seeing you all. And we'll know closer to the next meeting date if in fact, we will be doing it this way again or in person, but I'm guessing this way. All right?
All right.
Thanks. Bye. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Bye-bye.